That's a possibility. It could happen. And that way, we're -- we have that determination that we're a 501(c)(3) and we can -- the trust can accept that type of donation. And it would be tax exempt. The advantage then is, and his logic was if we obtain a 501(c)(3) determination, while we're at it, we should determine, seek a 115 determination which would allow -- relieve the trust from filing forms 990 and 990 PF, which are the annual tax returns. So that is the course of action that we are -- would suggest pursuing. And Joe's willing to work on filing those letter determinations on behalf of the trust. In the meantime, he is working on the trust's EIA, the employee identification, tax identification number, and getting that filed appropriately and to get that in time, that number in time so we can, the city can transfer the assets that have been designated for the trust and that are currently being held by the city to the trust. So that is the update. If you wanted to see, you know, Joe's reasoning about where the current state of the law is, I'd be happy to forward you his email with attachments as an attorney-client privilege. The fact that we're, this is the course of action, I don't think is attorney-client privilege because it's going to be public anyways. But if you wanted, if you wanted any further explanation from Joe, I'd be happy to forward that email to all or any or all members of the board.
How long does it take to get that determination back?
Well, we've got some time in terms of, I think it's probably going to at least be a couple of months, but you can go ahead and file, I would say a few months. You can file for an EIN on the presumption that you're going to be tax exempt, the entity's going to be tax-exempt under those two provisions. And if you, if you need to go back and revise it, you can go back and revise it. There's a, and there's a window within which you can do it. And I can't, for some reason, the window in my mind is something between a year and two years to do that. I don't remember it, but it's not, the fact that you've gotten your EIN first before you have that, that letter determination shouldn't be an issue.
Adam, perhaps I missed this, but Joe, Joseph Gibbs, I think, he's going to work on the letter of determination for us.
He's, well, he's going to, he's going to make the request, prepare the request to the IRS to, for that determination by the IRS. Yes, he's prepared to do that if, and I think that's still consistent with, within the scope of what the board voted and approved at your last meeting. But if anyone feels otherwise, we can.
Is there any other status that seems to me, I remember from the old, some of those older meetings, that they had some discussion around whether or not it'd be a 501(c)(3) or some other numeral and letter combination that, is there some other status that we might look towards that doesn't necessarily allow for outside donations? I mean, it would obviously be nice. I think most sane people would say, yeah, we'd like to take, yeah, people want to add money, they can add money. But if that's going to, is that going to limit us at all in what we're trying to achieve in any of this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
To some extent, it's a belt suspender, because you can donate to 115, you can donate to the city and it's tax- deductible. So, but a lot of people look for a 501(c)(3) because that's what they're normally used to. So they kind of balk sometimes if it's a 115 designation.
Yeah.
You, you know.
And to that point, to be able to identify the trust as a 501(c)(3) charitable organization or charitable foundation would be beneficial because that would be, to Craig's point, something that most people would understand and are familiar with, whereas Section 115 of the Internal Revenue Code, very few people are familiar with that.
Yeah, not a lot of people donate to the city, but every once in a while you can.
We occasionally get land.
Yeah, we do occasionally get land.
If you were Rick, do we anticipate others contributing funds to this, either that or their estate, like a community foundation throughout middle Tennessee or?
We never.
Because I assume this would only be funds from the sale over the next several years, so that may be a bad assumption.
Yeah, I mean, we built the models that way. And the dispersments going to charitable organizations can take donations directly. So I didn't think there was any anticipation really set it up that we would be something like United Way or something like that. I think it'd be rare, it'd be somewhat unusual, but.
That's kind of why I asked the question. I don't anticipate much of that, so I didn't want to limit what we were able to do, just open that door for those outside donations, right? That's kind of why I asked the question. I don't, I wouldn't anticipate any or much of that.
But we don't want to say no.
Say no, I mean, right.
And the other thing too, if for some reason, if for some reason, and Joe does not anticipate this, if for some reason the IRS were to come back and say, well, you're not, you don't qualify as a Section 115, I don't think there'd be any, they wouldn't have a good argument that we don't qualify as a 501(c), or that the trust doesn't qualify as a 501(c)(3). So the 501(c)(3) is kind of the backstop to the tax-exempt status. But what it does do is, does allow, make it easier to accept donations.
Adam, what is the city's tax status? Is it something?
It's a 115.
It's a 115.
It's the 115.
Yeah, so the city does not have to file tax returns. And what, the benefit to the trust, one of the benefits to the trust of being qualified as an instrumentality of the city under Section 115 is that the trust would not have to file annual tax returns with the IRS, which would be a cost-saving.
And the distribution requirements that don't apply.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Is the letter of determination with the IRS a, we'll say unilateral request? Do we qualify as a 501(c)(3), yes or no? Or are we asking them, do we qualify as a 501(c), whatever, nonprofit status? I don't know if it's a specific request or we're more broadly asking, are we a c)(3), c)(6), c)(7? How's Joe going to address that?
Well, having seen them before, generally, when you ask, you're telling them what you want. We want to be a 115, here's why we think it's a 115, tell us we're a 115, is generally how, more or less how it's phrased.
And I think Joe is looking specifically also at, we want to be a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, and also give us that designation.
And get, and asking for both of those things specifically and making the case why the trust qualifies under both of those provisions and giving the IRS the opportunity to say, yeah, we agree, or come back with questions, or to say, no, we don't think you qualify under one of these.
Yeah.
Again, I don't think.
You advocate for a position when you make the request.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
All right. Any additional comments or questions on this matter? And Adam, I missed this, but you said he should have the letter exactly when, you think?
Say the name, I'm sorry.
When do you think we'd have the letter?
I think, I would say that the, that we're probably, just given Joe's schedule as a tax attorney, we're probably looking at their, being submitted sometime after April 15th, but that it's probably going to be a few, a few months to have those determinations actually issued by the IRS. But that I don't see that, that passage of time as creating any issues from a tax standpoint for the trust.
Yeah. When we get the EIN, we'll do the transfer, so, and we'll go ahead and get the EIN. We're not waiting for the determination.
Does that request require him to do a lot of research? Or is he basically just taking information that we, that you'll provide presumably and say, we're seeking this and here's why? Here's our documents, our trust documents, and then you just wait for the IRS? Is it just an exchange, more administrative?
Usually you make your best arguments. So if there's anything out there that supports it, I mean, letter rulings are individual, they just apply to the one individual, and yet they're published. So you, you say, well, you gave this guy this, give us this too. So you may, you try and find as much as you can revenue rulings and, and put those in there to the, to the request. So I don't know if he'll do a whole lot of research, but.
I think he's actually done most of the legal research that would support the application for that letter ruling or letter determination. And that's, and he, what he found is that there is, in existing letter rulings, there is support for the position that, that the trust would qualify under both sections. But there's nothing, there's not a letter ruling or letter determination that's directly on point, that is a completely comparable circumstance. So that's why he's suggesting, let's go and get a determination specifically for this trust because we're not, if there was an apples-to-apples comparison, probably wouldn't need to go get that determination from the IRS. But it's not, they're both fruit, they're just not both apples.
All right. Any additional thoughts or questions on this matter? So there's nothing to do right now, we just have to wait.
You know action at this point in time, but needed from the board.
Excellent. Thank you, Adam.
Sure.
Mr. Tuck, we certainly appreciate the insight you provided. And we'll move on to item number three on our agenda, which is insurance coverages. And I believe we have Mr. Halliburton here to give us a bit of a presentation.
You get introductions, everybody knows you.
I think everybody knows you.
Everybody knows me.
I'm sure you do. They do.
I'm better than others.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Craig asked me to review what coverages that we thought that the board might need. And so we'll talk a little bit about those coverages and what we're including in our quotes. And then we'll talk a little bit about what we're not including in our quotes and whether or not the board would want to pursue certain coverages that are not part of this quote in and of itself. So if you look, if you look at the folder on the left-hand side, it says proposed policy period, let's look at that one that says 322 first. And if you'll go to the third page on, in that section, that's specifically talking about general liability coverage. And so what a general liability policy in, in this instance for this board would do is cover any resultant bodily injury or property damage that this board could cause. And you could talk about the fact that, well, what, what could possibly happen? If you, you know, we came into this facility, even though we are associated with the city and we somehow caused property damage to this facility, and the fact that it's a separate entity in and of itself, then the city may come back against this board because of the property damage that they caused. Or if we somehow caused bodily injury to a third party, that's specifically what this general liability coverage is for. The quote is, is using limits of a million dollars any one occurrence with a $2 million aggregate. It also includes a coverage called hired and non-owned auto liability. And you might say, well, this board has no vehicles, and I would agree with that. However, if any of you were in the course of doing business for this board, if Craig was representing this board in a meeting that he was going to, or if he was, some of y'all might meet with a possible applicant off-site, and, and when you were operating your vehicle, if you caused bodily injury or property damage in the course of that, going to that meeting or in the course of doing business for this group, this entity, then it becomes a non-owned auto liability exposure for this entity. So we're not covering your vehicle, we are not covering your personal liability associated with the use of your vehicle, even though you're in the course of doing business for this entity. But what we are covering is the entity itself, if somehow the entity is brought into that non-owned auto liability claim. There's a print, so if you look at this, the total premium is $926 a year. There's an endorsement on here called the broad endorsement, the underwriter included that. I'll just be quite honest with you, I don't think it's necessary. So the fact of the matter is that the general liability would be the 926 less the 150 is what we would be proposing. There are, I'm not going to take your time to go through each and every item in this proposal, but you will see some information more about the coverage that's afforded under the general liability. I want to spend a lot of my time on the directors and officers piece, if you don't mind. So if you'll go to the, well, is there any questions with respects to the commercial general liability? Okay. So we'll go, move on to the directors and officers, which is on the right-hand side. If you'll go to the third page, what we're proposing is a million dollars' worth of directors and officers coverage. Included in this coverage is, you'll see an additional defense. So a lot of times, like, if you had a homeowner claim or an auto liability claim, the defense cost is in addition to whatever limits that you have on your auto policy or your homeowner policy, okay? With directors and officers coverage, you can have it where the defense cost is included in the million dollars or in addition to the million dollars. And so the way this is being quoted is that the million-dollar limit would be afforded for any judgments that were made against this entity with respects to the directors and officers. And then the defense associated with that claim or that lawsuit would be paid in addition to the million dollars, okay? So that's what that additional defense, unlimited, so whatever the defense cost is associated with the claim, that's what they're going to pay on top of the million dollars in question. The excess side A, a lot of people went, they dealt with directors and officers coverage. If you looked at your bylaws, the bylaws are going to agree to indemnify the board members for certain things, okay? And, but there'll be, and those items would be outlined. However, there could be things, and I'm going to give you an example of one, that could happen, that in those bylaws, it doesn't say that they're going to indemnify you for it. So what this excess side A is, is doing is saying that, all right, even though your bylaws don't dictate that we're going to cover you for this, if it's covered as part of the policy itself, then you will have a million dollars associated with that also, and the defense would be in addition to that, okay? With all of this, there's a $5,000 deductible, and that deductible is on a perclaim basis, okay? Before we get into questions, let me, let me go through this whole thing, and then we'll, we'll address what questions you have at the end. So if you'll move on to the next page, you'll see employment practices liability. And a lot of people that are on nonprofit DNO boards or even corporate boards will look at this and say, all right, Mr. Halliburton, we don't have any employees, why are we talking about employment practices liability coverage? So what, usually what you would have this coverage for is if you had an employee or employees, and this coverage would be afforded for wrongful termination, age, race, or gender discrimination, wrongful hiring, or sexual harassment, okay? The reason why we are including it in this quote is because of this optional third-party liability sublimit of a million bucks. It's about the fourth one down. And what that is doing for this board is if you were accused of discriminating against a third party, so, I am the Halliburton charity, okay? And I apply, I come to y'all, I go through my application process, and I'm asking for $50,000. And you decide that you're not going to appropriate that money because I didn't complete the form right, or that's not the, the gist of this board. And I come back and I say, you know what, I think you're discriminating because I'm a overweight white guy, 59 years old. And so that discrimination process would be covered here and not with respects to the DNO section in and of itself. So I think it is very important when you're handing out money and you're taking applications to be processed and you're making a determination of whether you're going to afford funds to a party in question, that this coverage is part of your policy. Because it's one thing that they're unhappy with your decision, it's another thing if they accuse you of discrimination. And that's where this coverage would be afforded, okay? There is, and so there's also a $5,000 deductible with this coverage, the same as the directors and officers. So the premium on this coverage is $5,115, and that's again with the defense outside the limit. So let's talk a little bit about what's not included in here, all right? One of the things that you'll see sometimes on a directors and officers policy is what we would call crime coverage or employee dishonesty coverage. With a DNO board like this, or any board, a lot of times they may or may not have any employees, but they want coverage if someone stole money from the trust, okay? So right now, that's not here. I would, and I haven't had this conversation with Craig, but my guess is there's going to be what I would call checks and balances in place associated with this board and the people that are handling the funds that may, that may or may not be of concern to this board. But if it is, then we can add that coverage to this policy. But for right now, if we were, if, if one of the board members or someone that was acting on behalf of the board stole funds from the trust, that would not be covered. We would have to add that coverage into this policy. Secondarily, what's not covered under this policy that can be added is cyber coverage. So again, there's first-party and third-party coverages associated with cyber. I can't speak to how money will be transferred, how money will move in and out from the trust to whoever manages the trust's assets. But we at least need to have a conversation about how that's going to work, how money is transferred out of here or in here. When I say in here or out of here, I come out the trust account. And then also, if we will be holding on to any personal identifiable information like social security numbers, dates of birth, anything of that nature with respects to any applicants with any board members, or if we ever have any employees of the trust in and of itself. So those are two items, the cyber piece and the, what we call employee dishonesty, even though you don't have any employees, but it would be applicable to board members or anyone that's handling the funds associated with the trust. Those coverage are not, those coverages are not afforded under this quote, but they may or may not be of concern to you. So that's my presentation. I didn't want to take forever, but I'll entertain any questions anybody has. Yes, sir?
On the nonprofit coverage where it's got asterisks and it says policy level shared annual aggregate limit applies, no? I'm assuming that what that means is, is that we're not just capped at a million dollars a year. This would be, like, if we had three instances that happened in the same year, each one would stand alone, correct?
That's what that is saying.
It's not going to aggregate together and all we have is a million for those three claims.
That is a correct statement.
Ken, maybe three questions. One, I assume this coverage would also protect the allocations committee, since there's a separate committee that does the initial interviewing?
That is a correct statement, Lee.
Secondly, you talked about if the funds, someone were to take funds, embezzle, et cetera. I'm not sure how we're going to handle the actual dispersment of funds, but I'm going to assume, Craig, it's going to be either you and/or Jennifer and maybe one person from the board signing. But wouldn't the most likely risk we would have if, if, Craig, you or someone on staff did it, and so does the city have insurance on staff that would protect and ensure those funds if the embezzlement covered there? Because that'd be harder, the way I suspect this will work for a board member to.
Right.
To be involved in embezzling.
I can't speak for the city's insurance because we do not write the city's insurance. Speaking from an insurance professional perspective, my guess is, as, as any person that would be acting on behalf of this trust, the city's insurance would not cover the, if that person embezzled funds from this trust, because it's its own entity.
So that might suggest we should ask you to at least give us a quote for that.
Correct.
Okay. And then lastly, having dealt with DNO, sometimes on the claim side, are there any other gotchas? You covered one.
Yeah.
Any other gotchas that typically a board like this shouldn't be aware of, given the coverage that you're proposing?
Yeah, not that I know of, Lee, based upon the knowledge of what I know about this board and the intent of the board in and of itself. To sit here and say that everything that would be covered that possibly could happen, I'll be the first one to tell you that that's not, there's probably not a policy out there that I could share with you to make that happen. But, but in general, I would say that, you know, other than the things that I pointed out that we don't have, I feel comfortable. Now, you could argue, is, are these sufficient limits? We're at a starting point here, and, you know, I don't need to speak for other parties, but there are folks here that we have those discussions from time to time as to what's sufficient limits. And so I don't know that I can answer that question for you. This is a starting point.
I think it's where you look at the amount of coverage you want, you look at the cost, and you say, we can live with that cost, and let's go, or we cannot live with that cost, so let's go down. What about our eligibility to purchase cybersecurity insurance? Would this entity have to go through the same steps we had to go through? I mean, it's not like you can just step up and purchase that.
Correct. They're going to want to make sure that however the money's being transferred, how communication is done with respects to the trust and, and the party at hand, meaning whoever's managing the funds, they're going to want to know certain things are in place, as we discussed, before they'll even write the coverage anymore. Used to, you know, you throw out a premium, whether the loss control piece was in there or, or the risk control piece. or the risk control piece were in there or not, that is just not the case anymore. There are certain things that have got to be in place before, they'll just say, no, we're not, we're not going to entertain it. And without you doing this, this, and this, or once you do this, this, and this, then we'll provide you a quote for the cyber piece. I mean, that's
And you have to establish a whole set of policies and procedures for your organization. So Adam, that would really keep you on your toes to
And as you raise that, once again, the allocations committee could be of bigger exposure in many ways than
I think so, too.
This entity, just because of the information they would receive and handle, particularly they do allow electronic submissions for
I suspect the city has a cybersecurity policy that we could probably mirror off of for our
Yes. If you don't mind, Ken
No, go ahead.
To address two of the questions that have come up. With respect to cybersecurity, the city does have a cybersecurity policy coverage. And, you know, one of the things, to the extent that it's going to be the same people, the same network, the same computer that might be used for electronic transfer of funds, or if applications are submitted to city staff to be kind of, to assist the committee on contributions in this board and processing things. One of the possibilities might be to look to get
Excuse me?
I don't know if it would be
Rider?
Name the board as an additional insured, or, or a rider, or something like that.
I would be, one item that I would be careful of is if you do name the board as an additional named insured.
Yeah.
Then a lot of times these policies have what are called cross-suits exclusions. So meaning, one named insured can't sue the other. So if you've got two different, so if you got in a position that the trust wanted to file suit against the city based upon a city employee and their actions, then you may not have coverage because of that cross-suits exclusion.
Right.
So it'd be one thing to think about.
And that's something that I can look into.
Right.
But definitely, the recent experience, the kind of, the boxes you need to check to get cybersecurity are quite different than they were three years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago.
You're exactly right, yeah.
With respect to, you know, the insurance for, against crime, I think, I don't think the city's coverage under that, that crime policy would extend to distributions made by, or made by a city employee to, you know, a nonprofit, another nonprofit. However, I think it would extend to distributions made, made by the board back to the city. Because that would be the same type of thing as, you know, someone in the finance department, like, you know, skimming off the top of property taxes. And so I think, I think there's coverage for that, but I don't think there's the coverage for the distribution to the nonprofits. I would agree with Ken on that.
My biggest concern was, I use your term, skimming.
Yeah.
I mean, that's sadly all too prevalent.
Yeah.
Well, Ken, could you provide us just additional costs for the cybersecurity and just so we'll know?
The cyber, I can, will have to go through an application process, so it could take a little time, but the answer to your question is yes.
Are there, are there things that we can do, and just thinking about the communications structure and things like that as it relates to how they're, you know, how they're going to want to, we communicate and, you know, whether or not, we've been trained on not clicking links and attachments, not opening attachments and that sort of thing. I'm trying to figure out how we separate our communication within this group versus, I don't really know. I guess just versus personal computing, you know, we'll be using, many of us, I suppose, for this, we'll be using personal emails and things of that nature. And so I don't know really how we look at that as a group like we would in an organization, you know, like the city would have all their employees, they have their employee email address. Is that all the kind of stuff that you're going to need to be figuring out and getting to them?
Well, asks questions like that, and it, you know, and it would probably boil down to, so what does this application process look like? Meaning, are they having to provide a federal tax ID number just to go through the application process? Are they having to provide any other personal identifiable information? And, you know, if not, then we may not have a huge third-party exposure associated with how information is, is sent. Where we might have an issue is if our system somehow got hacked and it becomes a first-party claim and they are able to get to the funds based upon how we communicate and how we communicate with the person or entity that is managing our funds. You follow what I'm trying to get to?
Yeah, I think part of what, part of where this drives us is what we asked for on the application, I mean, we don't, I, you know, we certainly don't need to be asking for the applicant's social security number if we can help it. I mean, that's, that's, that's the kind of stuff that, that people get
Correct.
upset about. But, you know, the main thing for me is just the idea of, we're not really going to be custoding necessarily money, you know, we, we, but we will have the authority to, to be telling it, telling where that money will be custodied, right? And so I, I think it's going to ultimately end up what we do in our next section, wherever that money goes to ultimately, not necessarily our next section today, but eventually wherever that money ends up. I don't know that we can file an application until we know where the money's going and who's going to be custoding the money and things like that, or can we?
It might be a little difficult. You know, we just have to look at the questions on the application and, and see if we can get through the application process. But some of those questions may have to be directed to the party that is managing your funds.
And it may be simple, look, I'm in for looking at the quote, by the way. I mean, I'd love to see what that looks like, and, and so I'm, I'm in favor of that personally to at least let's look at it and see what that looks like. And it may just be, they may, they may say some kind of, you know, licensed firm. They don't necessarily have to know it's X, Y, or Z firm. It just needs to be a FINRA license, blah, 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 you know, whatever the technical legal terms for all that would be to say they're legit.
Right.
And that would be enough, as long as we choose a firm that fits those guidelines that they put forth. So I guess I kind of stepped over that a little bit, but I'm, I'd be in favor of looking to see what that looks like.
That's not a problem.
Hey, Ken, can you, can you explain to the board, Cincinnati's a great company. I've got experience working with them. But did you run a price quote with like two or three or four different companies? And does this provide the best coverage for the best price? Because there's not comparable companies with premiums, so can you explain how you came about?
So the answer to your question is no. We do represent many different companies from a DNO perspective. It was a timing piece. We got the application completed, and I actually saw Craig yesterday and told him I wasn't going to have a quote today, but I do. And yes, we can go to other carriers and get other quotes. I'll be honest with you, at this level of premium, you're probably not going to see a significant savings between one carrier over another. And then also from a coverage perspective, my guess is Cincinnati, and I'm, I'm not just playing this because this is the only quote that I brought to the table, but we'll have comparable coverage to, to any carrier that we would bring to the table. But it's no issue of getting other quotes, not, not at all. It was a timing piece more than anything else.
I mean, so today, and I'm, just to make sure we're all on the same page, today I felt like we were just kind of getting an idea about what all this looked like, and we're not necessarily committing for one particular coverage today. Is that, is that where we are today? Or we need, do we need to say, yeah, we need to go ahead and get this happening really quickly today?
Well, the funds haven't been transferred, so we're fine as far as, you know, coverage. But, but today was really what coverage to want to look at. And that was the purpose of it. And I think we've done that. We know we want DNO, general liability, and now cybersecurity to take a look at. And then I can work with Ken on the application to see what information we need and what's the appropriate time to maybe make that application as we go, as we go forward and put together other policies that we're going to need to do.
That's what I was thinking, is from a tactical standpoint, we don't have a tax ID, we don't have any money, even if we wanted to do it.
Yeah.
Everybody in this room wants to start writing checks and making donations to a nonexisting entity without a tax ID. This is all conversations.
Yeah.
Good conversation.
Really, what coverages do we want to have Ken start looking at? That was really the purpose of it. I think we got there. Unless anybody has any other coverages they want to have us look for.
We probably just need to get, when you start looking at that application for the cyber coverage, we, I assume that's going to be related somehow to the amount of money that's being moved into the trust, I would guess.
Absolutely.
So we need to probably get him that schedule that I'm getting ready to go over.
Yeah.
You know, so that he can pass that along.
Yep.
And I would say if we're getting numbers, the crime, I mean, we may look at it and it may not be worth it, but if it's a small amount of premium to have that crime coverage, just to make sure, even if we have extra coverage and it's a couple hundred bucks.
To be quite honest with you, it's not going to be, you know, thousands of dollars by any stretch of the imagination.
Most boards that I'm on carry a lot of this coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can tell you that the city's crime coverage is, the premium is under $10,000 a year, you know, and it's a significant amount of coverage. So it's, to Ken's point, it's not, it's not a big expenditure, especially when you're dealing, that's $10,000 for the entire city of Murfreesboro as opposed to
And one of the things, I mean, we're going to ultimately be talking about this money being custodied somewhere, like what I was talking about. And, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not worried about people in this group or the city. I mean, it's really more or less, wherever it ultimately goes is more kind of what I'm even would ever think would be some kind of, you know, even remotely realistic chance of something happening like that. But, so, yeah.
Some cyber thing or something, you know, or the cyber.
And I'll say, in, in the, in my business, in the banking business, and, and, you know, these are probably, these are not accurate statistics, but for every one person that physically walks in to steal money from a bank, there's a thousand or thousands that electronically try to steal money from the bank. And here's, here's the most likely scenario that I think this organization loses money is someone goes Craig Tindall's email, or Sean's email, or Chairman Gentry's email, and sends an email to whoever's the custodian of these funds and says, hey, we need to transfer this amount of money to XYZ nonprofit, which we just did a transfer a month ago, and it looks legitimate, we just sent that, that entity $2 million last month, why would we not be sending them another $2 million this month? Email came from the same people who have authority over the account, and then it's gone. That's the likely scenario for a sizable loss. And that cybersecurity, while it is difficult to get, there's a reason, I remember when it first came about 20 years ago, it was easy. Everybody was buying it, it was cheap, it was inexpensive because it wasn't a real, it wasn't a material threat from a risk profile standpoint. But the reason it's difficult to qualify for, the reason the premium's a little more expensive today, is because it is a real risk from a liability standpoint. So I, hey, look, I'm all over cybersecurity. I think, I think it's as important as any other security we have from a law standpoint.
Also, you get to do the continuing education on it as part of an eligibility. You have to keep training. And I attended a training in Nashville, and they said the number one, the expert who taught it said that the number one way that people find you is through LinkedIn. And they watch you on LinkedIn, they see who you, with whom you interact, and they just take that, and then she went into 10 different ways where they take that. And it's like, we're sitting here trying to do the right thing in our lives, and there are so many people out there trying to, she's dishonest.
Getting into nuts and bolts thing, if this would be helpful to the board in thinking about these issues, in the same way that the city is loaning financial services, legal services, you know, other staff to help with applications for grants, we could ask the city's IT department to say, okay, what, what could we set up for, you know, for the board, for the committee on contributions? Even if it's just, you know, an Office 365, you know, Outlook, Microsoft email accounts for the members of the board and members of the committee on contributions, that there is something, there is some, you know, cyberspace that is actually the, the insured entity, so to speak. So I, you know, if, I'd be happy to facilitate those conversations or start those conversations with the IT director and get some input from Ken in terms of what, what an organization, I know what the city is required to have, but what an organization like this might be required to have in term, for cybersecurity, and be happy to try to help that if that, if the board thought that would be helpful.
Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Ken, thank you so much for the presentation. And I agree with all the above. I mean, risk management, phishing, and all those different activities. I've received emails from CEOs telling me to move money and so forth and so on. We move a lot of money every day in the department I work in, in Treasury, so I would agree that both those options that Ken presented would be good additions to our policy, and I would recommend we move forward with them at the appropriate time. Anything else we need to do on this topic?
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Good discussion. Next order of business is overview of trust allocation history. And Mr. Lance, I think you're presenting some information for us here.
I'll blow through here fairly quickly. Just since we're already an hour deep today, I'm going to kind of knock through here to try to touch the high points, and then some of the stuff that will also be a little bit, a little bit rusty on me, but this, I think, will give everybody a good idea of kind of the, what we talked about at the last meeting, just sort of the, the initial structure of this, and the, may, may give you guys some insight into what the thoughts were of the council. So the history on this spreadsheet right here is that long ago, as all this stuff was materializing and we were selling the, the electric department, ultimately the council asked me to put together some ideas and some thoughts on, well, you know, what might we do and how might all this stuff be structured? This is part of that structure. But we also needed to see, well, what do the dollars and cents look like? What are the numbers kind of, how, how does this look? We, we went through, and you can see down here, there's a, there were a lot of different variations of this, okay? Some of those are just with one little change. I went through and did different, different distribution rates, different return rates of return, things like that. So they're the same numbers except a difference rate of return or something like that. So it's not quite 16, 17, 18 really different variations, but certainly five or six, okay? And ultimately, we use this as kind of a tool, the council did, to kind of make some decisions on, okay, well, what are we going to do with this? And how are we going to fund the trust and that sort of thing? So I'm going to, like I said, go through this kind of quickly, but ultimately, this helps just illustrate where does the money go? And I think we talked about this last time, but ultimately, you guys know that all of the dollars that are coming in, and I'm just going to round this off, the specifics are up here, but ultimately, the electric department asset was worth around $250 million. Because it was amortized over a 15-year period on a 3.3% note, there's another $50 million or so of interest. Okay? So just those, those are kind of the big numbers. So ultimately, the council kind of decided that we would feel okay spending the $50 million over a six-to-10-year period of the interest, but that we wanted the asset value to ultimately go to the trust, which is what we'll all be dealing with over time. Okay? So kind of to separate that out for you So kind of to separate that out for you, the columns here, here, and here, those are all dollars that are outside of the trust, okay? And so when we talked about this, we decided that there was enough priority on, for example, the West Park to add a little bit of our money that we'd be getting from the, from the electric, from Middle Tennessee Electric, to try to help beef that up, speed that up, et cetera, et cetera, on the West Park. And, and you guys also, you'll have to have just a little bit of grace on this. It's, spreadsheets make everything look so exact. This will never happen, okay? I said this to the council, this will never happen exactly like this because there are assumptions. Furthermore, we may have gotten our first deposit, the city, I think, got the first deposit in 2021, the calendar year 2021, from Middle Tennessee Electric, okay? But of course, you know, we're already outside of 2022 and we're talking about going into the trust. So obviously, it's not happening exactly like this, but we had to have kind of a framework and so that's how this looks. So I don't want you guys to get too messed up in the details here, okay? But this does give us a really, I think it'll give you everybody a real good understanding of kind of, hey, how is this going to really benefit our community, city, and everybody else? So these are really quick, obvious things. These two right here, traffic improvement, that's roads, road projects, all right? I think, you know, I may have even said, you know, it's pretty obvious we, that's, we need that, you know? And I still would say that, yeah, well, everybody, everybody would feel pretty good about building some roads, improving some roads. So that's, that's easy. But we can't do that stuff all at once, and so it's spread out. We can't do it all at once from a standpoint of how the money's coming in, and we can't do it all at once because we can't build a whole bunch of stuff all at once either as it relates to roads. It takes engineering and then so on and so forth. So we've spread those things out. Why does this column exist right here? Why are we taking money out of these dollars that came in from Middle Tennessee Electric and just putting them straight into the general fund of the city? Well, because Murfreesboro Electric gave money to the city every year in the form of a pilot, a payment of taxes. That number was somewhere around $3.1 million. You'll see that as we get on down, down, down further that way. So what we wanted to do is because we're, we're making eventual contributions to the trust, that thing will be accumulating as we go, and the city will be getting a distribution from a larger and larger number. This number could go down and down to smooth that, that revenue stream to the city out, okay? So we got a much higher number coming right off the top, and then, of course, that goes down and down and down as the cumulative trust deposits go up, and the city receives a bigger nominal dollar amount from the trust, okay? And I'll, I'll keep going here, but, so ultimately, what we're going to be dealing with is these deposits each year down through here, all right? That is mainly due to the fact that we didn't get all the money all at once. We're amortizing it, so we can't just put it all in there all at once. So this is how this flow will come to us. We have already gotten one large, the initial contribution, not to the trust yet, but to the city, plus maybe two payments, two annual payments, is that right? Or have they already gone three now? Do you remember?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, and yeah, twenty-two. It may twenty-three.
So anyhow, what we'll be dealing with then is, you know, somewhere in this neighborhood right here, right, you know, pretty, pretty quickly. And so here's our cumulative number. And again, you can't get too hung up in these things, but ultimately, if we said, okay, look, if we, if we earn 4% rate of return on these dollars, and I'll just tell you guys, like I told the council, the way I, the way I deal with things in life is I try to, you know, I'm more of an under promise and over deliver type of a person, and especially when I'm dealing with other people's money, taxpayer money in this case, and rate payer money, I don't want to be trying to assume we're going to make 9% per year, all right? So I just wanted to show, look, if we make 4%, and frankly, I'll tell you guys that when I was doing all this, interest rates were zero, which meant we had to be making 8% on our stocks to hit this number anyway. So I didn't feel, I felt like this was a pretty realistic number even. Now, I feel like that number is going to be a lot higher, to be honest with you. But anyway, so the way this thing flows out, okay, if we have these dollars in here, it earns this much. Okay, wait, if it earns 4% and this much, and you get a 4% distribution, it's only this much, why is there a difference? Well, because we're taking 4% of last year's value, not of the cumulative, okay? So this much is the total dollars that would come out of the trust. Scoot over here, gosh, I can't see this thing very well, sorry. All right, so the distribution comes out here, and you guys also keep in mind that I built this thing kind of for the benefit of the council to be able to understand what impact this was going to have. But as you scroll on through here, this total general fund contribution, well, where did that come from? Well, it came from the 4. whatever million dollars, that first one was the 4 million. Well, it came from the four, the three and a half million or whatever it was, plus 85% of this number, which is, you guys, as a quick little reminder, the distribution levels here, out of these yearly distributions, 85% of that is going to go to the city to kind of reclaim what was coming from Murfreesboro Electric in the pilot, and hopefully make that number be bigger for the, for the taxpayers over time. 15% will go to the, now we know as the committee on charitable contributions, okay? So you take the dollars that I had over here, 3.5 million dollars plus 15% of this, you've got a $4.3 million general fund contribution, right? So you can see over time, I built it so that this would be relatively smooth, instead of just doing something like a, you know, a 4 million, 4 million, 4 million, 4 million for 15 years, and all of a sudden in 15 years, it goes to, I think, I think I did the numbers just to see what it looked like. I think it went to 11 or 12 million or something like that if we waited the whole time, but nobody wants to go from four to 11 from a budgeting standpoint for the city, right? So we smoothed this all out, I smoothed this all out, and that's kind of what we ultimately agreed upon. This is in here, from a benefit standpoint, we wanted to see, well, look, we can't just forget about, Middle Tennessee Electric is going to pay taxes. So that's going to be coming into the city revenue as well, okay? But then I also went in and backed out what we expected to come from Murfreesboro Electric as the pilot, okay? So we've got all these things coming in, I'm not, I'm going to skip this, it's just too, we also, in this process, the, this is important enough, I should not skip that. The city council has always been in the, has always had something called outside agencies, right? And every year during budget time, we kind of make this decision on how much money the city is going to give to basically charities, okay? The council decided to try to kind of get out of that business and let this supplant that, okay? I used a very, very conservative number here, by the way, okay? But the reason I use a conservative number is because I didn't want this math to look more beneficial than it really was. Frankly, this number is higher. We give more than that away each year, but I wanted, I didn't want to conflate what this end number is going to be over here, okay? So anyhow, I did include that because that is a benefit to the city, which goes to here. So we got the general fund, then we've got the savings from not having to give the money to the charities directly from the general fund totaling here, act this back out, and we've got a net benefit number to the city. Because we got this, you know, instead of this, and there's some other, we did, we did do something else, and it's, it kind of messes up the numbers, but we did it on purpose. Aaron, I remember, caught me on my spreadsheet here, but, but I did it, I did some manual stuff here from a political standpoint, that, that we wanted to, we wanted to also smooth out the community investment charity contribution numbers if we could as well. And so I put some manual numbers in there. That really doesn't involve us because it's not coming from the trust. What, you know, only thing that comes from the trust is the 15% of the 4%, right? So, long story short, guys, I hope I haven't skipped anything. It's kind of weird for me to look at it this way, but ultimately, if you kind of get over here to the end, I mean, this is the column that is what the taxpayers and what the city should be looking at over the next 15 years. And I'll make this very simple for you, I hope. It's a $49 million benefit to the city of Murfreesboro taxpayers to do, if this all works out like this. I have used pretty conservative estimates, even though I told you this, it'll never happen like this because it's never going to be 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, right? I mean, it's, it's never going to happen that way. But if we average 4% over the next 15 years, and we give the money away in this way that we are bound to do, then there should be a $49 million benefit to the taxpayers, okay? In addition to that, instead of giving, and again, we'll use, here's where I made this manual for Aaron, this is where we got messed up, but essentially, just know this, if we use the numbers that we're, that we, that I use here, the $149,000, ultimately, by 15-year period, we'll be giving to charities $1.3 million a year, that 15% number, okay? So not only are the taxpayers benefiting by this amount, but the charitable organizations in our, in our area will also be going from $149,000 to $1.4 million that's going to those organizations. So you start to, you know, look at a cumulative number here, and you've got about a $12 million number going to charities over the next 15 years, okay? So that's kind of, that's kind of the really big picture here, and I'm sorry, I don't, I know we're just running so late, but ultimately, I will tell you that because of the way the math works, right, because we're funding this thing up as we go, and because we spent some of the money on the front end, because we're pretty good at that, that really, these years out here are really where you start getting the big hits, where you start getting the big benefit columns here and here. And so I wanted to see, well, look, this thing should go for a lot longer than 15 years, so I wanted to see what, oh, Craig put some fancy stuff on here. I didn't do this. You know, we're talking $140 million benefit to the taxpayers over a 30-year period. And, and I'll kind of tell you guys, this is the essence of this, just so you kind of know, just kind of from a business standpoint, if that asset was worth $250 million and we were receiving about $3.1 million from it each year, you know, that's a one and a quarter-ish, 1.3% return on that asset, right? And just easy math. If we can take that same asset and earn four, it's going to benefit our citizens a lot, our taxpayers, and certainly, you know, certainly our financials, right? And if we walk over to the lights and flip them and they still turn on, and, you know, all that stuff is still the same, which it is and has been, I think everybody's been pretty, pretty pleased with Middle Tennessee Electric, why wouldn't we do this, right? So, so this is kind of how this all got going from the start. I hope that helps you all understand, you know, when you hear, if somebody ever walks up to you and says, well, you know, I never agreed with you, they should have never sold it in the first place, and, you know, I've heard that 100 times, and it's fine, everybody can have their opinion on it, but from a business standpoint, there's not a whole lot of argument in my mind. And from a taxpayer's standpoint, there can't possibly be very much argument in my mind, and that's what I was elected to do, so that's what we did. So anyway, is that, what kind of questions? I'll go back to this 15, any, any questions on any of this? Just as we, I hope, I wanted to just be a big picture of this so you guys at least had some concept of it. And I'll still mention to you again that if you want to go through that with me personally, you want to look at it, drill down in more detail, glad to do it. We'll go to lunch and dive right in. All right?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Lance? Well, thank you so much for the excellent presentation. It was definitely helpful to me. It's good to see those numbers. Let's see where we're at on our agenda here. All right, next we have on the agenda number five, transfer and management of Corpus.
Right. As we talked about a little bit earlier, as soon as we get the EIN numbers, we can evaluate the transfer. Right now, the money's with Raymond James. Jennifer, can you answer any questions of what it's held into? It's generally in the type of investments the cities can make, which are extremely conservative, very, very solid, very safe. As we transfer those over, Raymond James has said we can maintain those same assets, we just, we change the ownership to the, to the trust, hold it in EIN until we put together some of the other type of things we'll talk about in just a minute, as far as the investment policy and retaining investment advisors and such. So what you have before you are resolutions that, the first one is to accept the transfer of funds from the city, and then appointing Jennifer and myself to go ahead and make that transfer to Raymond James, and then set up a bank account with some funds, we'll talk about it when we get down to eight, just for general purposes of putting things in place, reimbursing the city for some costs, putting things in place, creating a budget. So the board will entertain the, I can answer any questions, but the board will entertain the resolutions, probably do them separately, just so we have a clean record on resolutions, and we'll get those done.
Let me make sure and say this too, and I, and I have a general question on some of this, but I want to make sure I'm transparent on this. You know, I'm associated with Raymond James Financial Services. This is Raymond James and Associates, which is technically a different entity, but under the same umbrella, okay? And, and so I'm probably not gonna, I'm just going to play it safe and stay out of this conversation, but I do want to just make sure I'm asking this for, because from my own knowledge, is, is, this is, this account that we're talking about doing here is just a temporary holding place? Is that, that's, we're not talking about making a decision on who's going to be the ultimate advisor or holding place? This is just getting it somewhere?
Yeah, it's taken at the real conservative funds that the city is permitted in just changing the names, so they'll stay in the same funds, but they'll start earning interest for the trust, supposed to the city. So that's, that's why we want to do it before, we don't want to wait a few months before we get an investment advisor in and make.
Hey, can we open that account without an EIN?
No, they want an EIN. So we'll get, but we'll get that, the EIN will come quickly. That's online, it comes in quick, so we'll have that pretty quick.
So this, though, we're just giving the authorization on the front end to do it once all that stuff gets in line, is that kind of what this is all about?
Yeah, Raymond James, they want resolutions, this model's their, their form resolutions, and then banks like resolutions, when you set up bank accounts, they want to make sure you're not crazy, I guess.
Turned into quiet all that, Craig. Don't like banks.
I should have said, you guys, that, I mean, I would have, I would have no direct or indirect benefit from this at all, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay out of that. I want to make sure everybody understands, this is absolutely not my office, not pinnacle, not a pinnacle office, it is a separate, independent, that's what Raymond James and Associates is, is independent. They're not associated with banks and stuff like that, okay? So just make sure everybody knows that. I'm gonna be real.
You love those calls from compliance, huh?
It's not just.
Add to what Craig has said, we'll also be opening an account with Truist for operations. So the resolutions are what Raymond James and what Truist requires in order to get those accounts opened. So what you have before you is part of their required documentation.
So we need to vote on these resolutions separately, because I know the third one is Truist, first one is Raymond James, I believe.
The first one's for the city, just to accept, so we'll have something that says, you know, in the record that you guys took the money from the city, and then the second one's. one's Raymond James' transfer, and then setting up Truist accounts, the third.
Is the 41195, is that number--
That's the number of--
That's the total amount that--
One, two, three, and four, whatever it was?
Yeah, it's the -- yes.
The 24 million, yeah. And by the way, that, I can't tell you all for sure, that was the spreadsheet that we had, and it's really, really close, but there may have been a few dollars off that ultimately, when they sent the check, because of some interest that it accumulated or something like that. So, it's really close. But usually, that's the portion we're going to take out of the initial, plus the first couple or three years of--
That is the amount owed to the trust from the first payment and the through July 1, 2022 payments that have been received.
Yeah, the two payments.
Gotcha.
And then the third payment will just follow the dispersal schedule, but that won't be till July 1.
Gotcha.
Hopefully, by that time, we will have an account set up with Raymond James in the trust name, or you will have been through your RFP process, but I don't think that'll be done by that point.
Yeah, we probably won't have the investments. We'll probably just still be holding them in the -- let's call them the initial accounts, holding it in there until we get the investment manager all set up.
In that, I would prefer us have insurance in place before we take possession of any funds.
Insurance for the board?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though we're not making investment decisions in that account just yet, I would prefer to have insurance in place before we even take any possession of any funds.
The only hesitancy is the cybersecurity and how long that'll take up. The DNO insurance we can get, the general liability and DNO we can get.
Yeah, I just really wouldn't even want a day gap in there, that we take possession of funds, and what funds are -- where the funds are allocated. We don't have -- we haven't made that decision on investment advisor. I think we expose ourselves to some--
Yeah, it's a good point.
-- explicit liability by taking possessions of funds that we don't have, we're not covered for.
Well, if the board doesn't have any issue with the general liability and the DNO insurance that Ken talked about, we can go ahead and put those in place, and then do the transfers when we get the EIN. And then, once we get the policies and investments, now, those funds will be in Raymond -- we're not going to be transferring anything else at that point in time, so it won't be a lot of action, and we won't do anything with the Committee on Contributions of yet, so we're not gathering any information. But once we get to policies, then we'll go back and get the cybersecurity.
I'm fine with the GL and the DNO that Ken presented earlier. I think on a base level, we need to have that in place before we do any material--
Yeah, that's a good point.
-- control or management of any funds.
So, to Sean's point about looking at different premiums, do we want to just authorize you all to work with Ken on that, to make sure--
Yeah, and have him go out and get quotes, yeah. At that level that we're talking about, and we'll talk about the budget in a second, I budgeted about $5,000. It looks like maybe we'll budget more like $10,000, maybe, just to put aside for that, and then we'll get the best coverage and the best rates on there. But, yeah, DNO is probably, I mean, if we save 50 or 100 bucks, I'd be surprised between the--
Simpson has a great company, and sometimes you can save money, but there's so many exclusions. When you look at the policies, it's not worth it. I just want to, from our perspective, just do some due diligence, so if anybody ever comes and says, "Well, hey, did you go with..." Just checking some boxes, just to make sure of it.
And they work with a lot of different ones.
Speaking of that, is there anything that I assume may be in actually one of these booklets? I mean, is there any best practices stuff that would be, that would say, and again, I have to, I need to tread a little, well, I'm going the opposite direction, Sean, I guess it really matters. Would there be any reason for us to go out and get multiple agents to look at that, you know, that? I just want to make sure it's from a best practice standpoint, we don't need to do that. Again, I need to--
Different brokers, you mean?
Yes.
I don't think it's necessary, because he has, he's not captive to one agency. If we went with one broker, that all they had was, let's say, State Farm, maybe that's more important, but if he can shop multiple companies, especially, I mean, we're talking about, and I believe him, I've been involved in insurance with our company, in this policy, there's not going to be a lot of price variation. So, I'm comfortable with that.
Because he works for the same company I work for, I'm going to probably have to stay out of that conversation as well, okay? Just from a focus standpoint. I hope this isn't a -- I don't think this is going to be a theme, but today's twice.
It's with Raymond James and Associates, because that's where the money's at. I'm fine with starting with this, and allowing him an opportunity, and the board an opportunity to shop this with potentially other brokers, other carriers internally. I just think we need to get something in place to get the fund moving.
So, it sounds like a motion.
Everybody be uncomfortable with just getting that insurance in place now?
A motion would be to proceed with the presentation that Mr. Halliburton made today, getting us the DNO insurance he presented and the general liability he presented, to allow us to receive funds from the city and allow this process to keep moving.
I'll second that, just to get officially--
Move on.
Discussion.
It's been properly second, approved, and seconded. Any additional discussion?
Would the city want to get their own insurance agent to look at it? You indicated that somebody else, oh, Ken said. You want it to be separate?
We couldn't look at it now, because we're, both the ENO and the employment practices and the general liability are through a municipal risk pool, and so, our property insurance, we go through a commercial broker. Our cyber, our crime, we go through a commercial broker, but the liability, we don't. That would not be helpful.
You could almost put an RFP out for that, but then it's going to take some time.
Okay, we got a motion on the table to move forward with this insurance policy, based on the quotes presented by Mr. Halliburton, correct? Suppose we need a vote on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Upstake.
Okay, it's been approved, so I suppose we'll just move forward, telling Mr. Halliburton to get us our insurance. And then, I guess we'll have to take up these next three items once that, once we sign that policy, correct?
Yeah. Why don't you want to defer the--
Yeah, we need to vote on these items number five, A, B, and C, tonight, so that we can--
Yeah, and then we'll just time it properly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Go ahead. So, each one separately, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the first item for resolution number one is the board shall accept the initial balance from the city of Murfreesboro, and will undertake the duties required to manage and disburse the funds consistent with the terms and conditions after we get insurance.
I want a motion to approve that, continuing upon our insurance being in place.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Applegate?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Upstake.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Chair Gentry.
Yes. Okay. Our second resolution, appointing administrators for investment accounts. Craig Tindall, City Manager, and Jennifer Brown, Secretary, City Recorder, and Finance Director, establish and maintain one or more accounts with Raymond James and Associates for the purpose of purchasing, investing, and then otherwise acquiring and selling securities.
Good idea.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Stop it.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Can we get a vote, please? Any, well, any additional discussion? Can we get a vote?
Mr. Applegate?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Upstake.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Aye.
Chair Gentry.
Yes. Resolution number three, appointing administrators for banking accounts. This gives the authority that Craig, Mr. Craig Tindall, City Manager, and Jennifer Brown, Board Secretary, Recorder, Finance Director of the city of Murfreesboro, be and hereby are, each of them individually authorized and empowered for and on behalf of the trust establishing and maintaining one or more banking accounts with Truist Bank for the purpose of holding funds necessary for day-to-day operations. Can I get a motion to approve? Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any additional discussion?
I have a daylight and a dollar short. I have a question about the previous approval and motion and resolution and this resolution. Do we have concerns about these resolutions being so specific to a bank or a broker, in that if we shop, send out an RFP and make changes, are we going to have to file an entirely new resolution?
Yeah, we'll probably prepare a new resolution. We'll probably want a new resolution anyway. They'll have their own language. This follows Raymond James' form, so they'll probably have a new one. Yeah, this is true, it's because the SunTrust is what we use now, so.
Additional questions? Okay, can we get a vote?
Mr. Applegate?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Stone?
Aye.
Chairman Gentry.
Aye. Okay, next order of business, number six, review of financial advisor selection process. Mr. Tindall?
I'd ask Ms. Davis to give us a little bit of background on her experience at Christie Houston, and how they went about the process for their investment advisors. So, Anne, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, sure. When I left the hospital and went to the Christie Houston Foundation in May of 2017, the very first meeting I had was with the investment advisor for the Christie Houston Funds, a gentleman from Charlottesville, Virginia. And they were there in person, and so, I asked, after they left, made their presentation, I, you know, asked how they had been chosen, and I was told that they had been chosen when the -- there were several different private schools in the area that were looking for investment advisors, and so, the powers that be on the Christie Houston Board said, "Well, this will be a great fit for us, too." And so, then I started going to Southeastern Council Foundations meetings, and that's a big southeastern group where all of the private, community, and corporate foundations gather once a year for an annual meeting, and then they gather for other specific-type meetings throughout the year. And so, that was like my continuing education on foundation, investment management, grants, governance, every topic. And so, when I went to the investment committee meetings, the topics, the teachings, they were like, "No, you do a request for a proposal. It's a process, and you make sure that as many people in your organization are involved with selection, and you do it every seven to 10 years." Well, Christie Houston, you know, at that point, was, what, 31 years old, and we had never done one. So, I went back and explained this to our chairman, and then to the executive board, and they were like, "This is great. We need to do this." And so, we did. At the next Southeastern Council Foundation meetings, it was a CEO forum, and they have that every year, and I went. And so, we got to ask a question at the last day of this conference, "What's keeping you up at night?" And so, my question to my peer group was, "How do you find a consultant to help you with an RFP for a new investment advisor?" And so, I'm in a group of people that do this regularly, have been doing it, best practices is the name of the game. So, they all gave me the name of their consultant that had helped them. And for those of you who are thinking, "Gosh, can't you do that in-house?" Well, as I've explained this, you'll understand why the consultant was a great decision for us. So, I spent about two weeks on the phone, making appointments with different RFP consultants in the country. I ended up with six good names out of about 10 or 12. I ended up with six that did what we needed to do, and just made, you know, long, copious notes on each one, took that back to my investment committee, and we worked through these choices, and we narrowed it down to two. And then, we took all of the facts and figures about each of the top two to our board, and we selected a group out of Atlanta. Out of all the different groups that we studied, they were the only person, when we called them, they drove to see us in person. Our other top-two nominee was a gentleman out in California, who I thought was really fantastic. But we ended up picking a gentleman named Brad Alfred from Atlanta. His company is Alpha Capital Management, and he and his business partner, they're two owners of the company, Brad and Anna Kempti, she has an unusual last name. And we had them come and talk to us about this. And so, what the long and short of it, because I know we're short on time today, is that they come in, and they just come alongside you, and they study your investment, the amount of your corpus, they study your investment policy statement, they help you build the questions for the RFP. So, there are 100 questions in our RFP. And so, they have most of those questions that they ask almost everyone to whom they enlist to reply. But we had an opportunity for our investment committee and our board to also add questions. And so, the first week, they're building that, working with us. They have a timeline. It's about a four-month process. The second week, they send these final RFP questions to our board. It's all reviewed. Everyone has their input. We come up with the final, we came up with the final RFP questions, and then they go back and they send these out. They knew, like, the minute I started at my new, in my new position, different people started calling on me about managing our investments. Now, keep in mind, they had been with the current OCIO for 16 years. And it was very interesting to me, when the decisions had to be made to whom to send the RFP, not one of the people that had been calling on me was on their list. And they have this system where they said, "This is how much your corpus is. This is your mission. This is this, and these are the companies that fit what you do." And they know, and it's just amazing. We ended up having them come to help us narrow it down. We narrowed down from 10 to 6 to 4. The 4 included our current OCIO and three of the 10 that we liked the best. They came in person. It was a Friday. Our investment chairman said, "Our investment committee has four people on it. We want all 10 directors to participate." They all gave us their whole day. And so, we had a firm come in every hour on the hour. They had a 45-minute presentation, and then we discussed them for 15 minutes, and the next group came in. So, we interviewed all four firms, including our current OCIO, and it was a real learning experience for our board. I think they really enjoyed it. They heard presentations from very different types of investment firms, and they decided to go with the firm that we selected. We had never heard of this firm. That's why I say the consultant can be so important in helping you match up what you're trying to do with your mission, the amount of money you have, you know, are you interested in perpetuity, which I know this group is. And we ended up with a group that our current OCIO had such a hard time getting into private equity investments. And so, every now and then, they would call and say, "Oh, we're able to get into private equity," and we'd have to hurry to, you know, write our check for part of that. We bought into a company that has pooled assets. So, on the first day, we were at our benchmark for how much we wanted to be in every category. And it has worked out well. You know, the economy goes up and down, but they're very attentive. They come four times a year to talk to us. We have updates. We quit doing it monthly. We just look at final numbers now, so it's usually about a quarter in arrears, but we've been very pleased. So, you know, we've been with this company almost five years now. Best practices are that you do this every seven to 10 years. So, it's not too far in the distant future that we'll be doing it again. And Brad and his company have grown quite a bit since we used them in 2018. And Craig, did you put in that list of their current clients?
Yeah, it is.
I'm not trying to sell them at all. We may want to do our own due diligence, but Alpha Clients is at the back of that, and--
If you look on your, yeah, past your orange sheet there, in the very back is a list of clients that they have.
They've been very creative. They have, you'll see on the second page, the OCIO landscape. He says it's just exploded. And an OCIO is where, instead of having a CFO, we have this, all of this work outsourced. And we do reports, and we communicate with them weekly, but we don't have a CFO on our staff. He also-- He also, he and Anna have developed an indices where they measure the performance, like, if Christie Houston wants to know, how do we and our investment advisors line up with others? They partnered with NASDAQ, and they've come up with, with that, and we're able to get access to that information also. So, you know, as you study what you're doing, it's interesting to see how you line up with other people doing similar things.
Peer universe, right?
Peer universe, yes, exactly. And so, that's just hitting the highlights, I know we have a PowerPoint and all that, maybe we'll do that next time, but this is, this was, it was about six months for us because I think we were just so new at what we were doing, and I spent quite a bit of time doing the due diligence on the RFP consultants. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Did they consider, when you said they narrowed it down, any people that had expressed interest locally, or we'll just take middle Tennessee, or were none of those considered? Just out of curiosity.
I tell them the name of everyone who had called on me.
Okay, so they at least put them into the pool for an RFP, and they were given equal consideration?
No.
They were not?
Because, and they told us why, for each one, why they were not a fit for us.
Okay.
One of the folks who had called on me a lot, you know, really took great offense, and I just said, I think it was really rather new at that time to have these RFP consultants. And I said, well, you know, the headquarters for your bank is in Atlanta, and they are in Atlanta, and really, you might just want to make sure your company goes over there, and if what they've told me about you and a fit for us is incorrect, you would want to correct that, and they would want to know.
True.
And they went the next day. So, you know, I think it's come a long way in five-years. And there may be additional people that we want to look at, this is just the experience that we had with this particular one.
Gotcha, thanks. Did you say that they, they narrowed it down to 10, to 10?
Our board did, from the ones that they told us were a fit for us.
The hour-long, how many of those hour-long?
We did four.
Four?
We interviewed our current.
I thought you said you did 10 of those, I was like, whoa.
Our current advisor, and then we went from 10 to 6 to 3.
Gotcha.
And then we added in our current as a courtesy.
I see, yes.
And we were really amazed at how poorly they performed. And then, that was an aha-moment for the board, this is really important to do this, right? So, just everything's a learning curve for me.
Always is.
Always is.
Well, so, so I will plug in one thing here, and I don't know where, I can't ever remember where these things got to, whether it was in the trust document, or the charter change, or the whatever it is. I will tell you that there was a desire from the council that I think we wrote down somewhere to be not local as it relates to the RFP consultant, that kind, what we, we called it the quarterback, we talked about it in terms of the quarterback. So, there was not a local person here making that ultimate decision to, to say, you know, these are the groups that need to come, that you need, that fit best for you, okay? And so, the language that we used may not have been even exactly like, you know, we, I can tell you, we never used OCIO, you know, that, that was never any of the language that we used. But what the committee kind of came to, and then the, subsequently, the, the council was that we wanted to get out, I think we said out of state, if I remember right, out of the state of Tennessee completely for the RFP consultant role, but that certainly, that, those people could certainly vet and, and look at local folks, you know, managers to, to be in part of their mix if they thought it was best, okay? But that was taking the, that, that part of the decision. And you guys, I just say it out loud, as of course you know from what I've just done in these, kind of these last couple of motions, I mean, I'm really, really sensitive to this, not only because of, you know, this is sort, you know, this is what I do, but you, you know, it's, I never, I want to stay so far away from any kind of, you know, Rick LaLance is going to be managing this money kind of thing, that I, I just, I'm, I'm really super crazy about that. So, just if I, if I overdo it, forgive me on trying to make sure I'm being conscientious about that, because I just, I don't need that in my life. I don't want those phone calls, and it's just, because it's, it's not going to happen that way. I'm not going to be in the mix of this in any way, shape, form, at all, okay?
And I understand that, Rick. In your notebook, there's a page called overview of the Alpha search timelines.
I guess I need.
They're not numbered, but this is what it looks like. It has vertical columns.
Got it, got it.
And so, when these RFPs come back, they receive one in Atlanta, and then we received a box from each of the four organizations, too, and ours were about 600 pages each. So, it's not just the process and the knowledge and the insight that they have, you know, they, their team is the one that reads through all the answers to those 100 questions, and they summarize it for you, and it'd be very hard for a two-person office to sift through that kind of information, especially.
Well, nor do you have the skillset to do it effectively.
Without any finance, yeah, skillset, that's exactly right.
How many of the, the RFP consultants did you guys talk with?
We spoke in person, in personal interviews around our board table with four groups.
That was the RFP consultants or the ultimate money manager?
Oh, excuse me, the RFP consultants, I interviewed six on the phone, and then I asked for each of them to give me references. So, that was what really took two weeks to do all of that. The reference that really made me look at Brad a little bit more closely, Alpha Capital Management, was the University of Tennessee. He was doing an RFP for their, for a $1 billion endowment that they had. And so, this gentleman in the foundation at UT kept me on the phone for an hour and a half telling me about him, they loved him.
Wow.
So, that was really a great recommendation from your school.
Hard for you to accept that, wasn't it, Anne?
No, I was glad to.
It's shocking that Tennessee would recommend an Alabama grad, because it looked like Alabama, so.
I saw that, too.
Well, we can overlook that.
We start every conversation and end every conversation with, well, type. I'll put that on my conflict of interest today.
Well, I don't know, you guys, I, I think just from a, where, I don't know what we need to decide today, but I'll put my two cents in on this, is I think it would probably be wise for us to at least talk to one or two other CFP, or, sorry, RFP consultants. I, I don't know how we all want to go about that, but it's probably wise for us to, to, I don't think we need to go to six. I, I don't mind using a little somebody else's heavy lifting, and so, maybe we make that number two or three, and, and I would certainly advocate for choosing Alpha as one of those people, just because we have had a lot of heavy lifting already done there. And so, but, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there, and I don't even know what this position we need to take, or how we need to get this started, but that'd be my idea on it.
There was another gentleman in California, and he was, he was really very engaging, and part of his process is that he took the search committee for the RFP consultant to the, he actually took them to, like, the top four. He actually, part of his process was that the group traveled there to go into the investment firm, to meet the people in person, to feel the culture, he had a whole recipe about that. And, you know, our board didn't want to spend that kind of money with all that travel.
I understand that.
To do that, so. So, there are probably some new ones, too, in this space, since the OCIO space has just exploded.
So, Alpha is in Atlanta, right? And then, ultimately, they helped you guys choose one out of four, and that firm is, is where, the, as far as the OCIO?
The, our OCIO is in North Carolina.
Got it.
They only do foundations, so.
Okay.
What does the consultants charge for that? Is that just a fixed rate that they charge for that whole search, the whole process? It's like, here's the bid, and here's what it is?
And five-years ago, they ranged from 40,000 to 80,000. So, five-years later, I can inquire. I'd be happy to be part of that, setting that up or whatever, we can interview people on Zoom now. You know, five-years ago, we didn't really know how to do that, but whatever your wishes are, I'd be glad to help.
Craig, what are we looking at in terms of timeline on all this?
Well, there's no set timeline, I think going forward as quickly as possible is probably a good idea, since there is going to be an extended timeline to make the selections, more than likely a few months anyway. Today was really just intended to be an overview, but if the board's ready to say, you know, you guys start narrowing down the RFP consultants, so you can consider that, and I, you know, I'd be happy to work with Anne, and we can, we can come up with some names, some proposals, ask them for some proposals, and maybe next month, sit down and talk about those and get the ball rolling along those lines.
And you want to get on their schedule, too, because it's not like they don't have a lot of business.
Yeah, it might be a month, the next meeting or the meeting after that, depending on what it looks like for the, the consultants themselves.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of moving forward, identifying an RFP consultant and rest of the board is.
Okay.
I don't even know, I'll lean on you, I don't even know how to start the process, and I think that's what we're really looking for, is how to, how to define a protocol and a process for doing this. So, when you look at the list, and it's marked confidential, so I'm not sure it's supposed to be in here, but you're number 12 on the list, and then there's a 15 billion, a 12 billion, an 8 billion, I mean, there's 22 billion with a financial institution that's in their backyard, so there's some sizable names on here, so.
I got permission, he got, he gave me permission to share that with Craig, yeah.
But there's some very recognizable, I would say, foundations, but investment funds that are in here, and some very recognizable names that are in here as well, so. I wouldn't know where to start the process, I think that's what we're trying to do, is create a process, and I would, and, Davis, I would lean heavily upon you in, in that category.
Frank, I'd be glad to reach out to, we have a CEO email with.
Okay.
Southeastern Council Foundations, and just see if there are any fresh names that we don't know about. And, you know, I don't know if you want someone on your staff to make the calls, or I could make the calls, and then hopefully come up, you think three would be enough, or?
I think three's plenty.
And price may factor into it, too, you know? Maybe, like the insurance, we don't want to look at the price, too.
And, you know, that company, I assume the, the, the RFP consultant will help us also, they'll be able to look at the, the schedule of payments and decide, you know, there may be some firms that just say, we won't even talk to you unless you got 100 million to start, you know?
Well, there are categories, it goes from up to 250, and then, well, it goes up to 50 million, and then there's a category from 50 million to 100 million, and then the next jump is 250 million, 500 million, a billion. So, he, they know which ones work in which space, and.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And we, you know, we got into one in the 100 million, even though we were just under 100, so.
I, I can say that I think that the, the, the money that it's going to take, and let's just say, let's assume that that number is 50 to 100 now, rather than 40 to 80, or something north of 40 to 80, is probably going to be well worth the, the due diligence that they'll provide. And so, yeah, I'd say, let's get that thing, let's get that moving, and try to get three total, one of them being Alpha, and get that moving as fast as we can get it moving.
And you know, the thing is, if you do want to interview them, you could do that, you know, we could all be at work on the interview, we don't have to come here and have a schedule found to be away from the office.
Does that bubble underneath the sunshine laws?
Yeah, we do have the sunshine laws, so we'd have to, we would have to gather up and, and post it, but we can do Zoom on, on here.
Perfect.
Yeah.
We might be able to do that on our new city cyber space they're going to build for us.
You can get Governor Lee to re-sign his order, allow electronic meetings, we can do that. Killed that order a little bit ago. So, we're back to seeing each other in person.
All right.
So, we'll work on that.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, it was definitely informative.
Yes, thank you.
Very, very good. All right. Next order of business, number seven, review of draft investment policy, Mr. Tendell.
Yeah, there's a, really nothing much to do, there's a draft, you know, I looked at several investment policies, several model policies, tried to, they were pretty similar, tried to put them together just as a draft policy to give to the board, to look at, to start to think about. They're important, they're very important to have for an organization like this, to cover a lot of the issues that are, that are touched on in here. I think, though, that probably when we get an OCIO on board, yeah, is to go and start to develop policy with them. So, there's really nothing to do today, but other than to, to mention that it's, it's there, I added to your pack, it's a little bit of background on, on what an investment policy is really for, just in the very front there, but, but that's just for considerations you go forward. I sent you some other publications, those touch on that type of policy as well, so if you get a chance to look through those, I know they're, they're long, but there's a lot of good information in those that came out of the CFI Research Institute. And if you want a hard copy, Rick asked for a hard copy, gave them, I have another set I can print out, if anybody wants to go old-school and read it on paper, certainly happy.
Ours won't be as long as yours.
So, that's, that's all for that, it's just really for, get the gears turning on those, those type of policies.
Thank you, Mr. Tendell. I, I look at quite a few investment policies, and in terms of the content and the different sections and things you have put in there, that's definitely something worth, I mean, it's, it's a very good.
No, thank you.
Which I put together, yeah. Next item of business is number eight, review of budget, looks like you're going to talk about the administrative fee, and then we need to vote on it.
Yeah, just to put together a, a bit of a budget to get us started, is the amount we, we'll take a, and set aside in the Truist account that, that will be set up. There's, if you'll turn, there's a couple of sets of budgets in there, one is just for the operating period through June 30th of this year, which is fiscal year, it's the third, well, it's, it's the fourth, yeah, there, you got it, yeah, it's got a blue heading on the top of it. Put together a few, a few expenses in there that, that the board will likely incur over the next few months, and then I went ahead and did, next year, probably would have to, the investment fees category, based on our conversations here, that would encompass everything, including the RFP consultant, and then whatever fees we have in, so we'd probably want to change that number, that's in the future, I'm not sure how much we'll incur between February to June, but we can certainly come back and adjust the budget whenever we need it. But that's, that's the information that, that we have in there, it does show some investment earnings, it's just a projection on the budget for a short period of time, quarter.
Would you want to include the grant software in that figure?
Yeah, that's, we could maybe add the grant software, and that's a good idea. So, I'll get a number from Angela, who's knotted over there.
I believe, because Anne's already given me good advice.
Yeah, we'll put the grant software in there, maybe add, add an amount in there for that. So, generally speaking, if the, if the, that numbers, the numbers came out to about 90,000, round numbers, if the board wanted to say 100,000 into the bank account just to get things rolling, and then we'll, we'll work from there, and we'll bring back now every month, accounting where we're at, if the, the bank account and expenses and, and such, so that the board has a good sight on that every month.
Yeah, based on some of the numbers, I mean, even the insurance number looks like it may be a little low based on what we're.
Yeah.
So, we probably do need to build some cushion in there, do you feel like 100,000 is adequate?
100,000, yeah, we can get the bank account established with 100,000, and if, working through the next month or two, we need more, then we'll, we'll come back to the board and ask and transfer that from the funds that are being held.
Excellent, any questions about that? Okay, I can get a motion to approve the initial budget for 100,000 dollars to get us started. It's been properly moved and seconded, any additional discussion? Ms. Crowe?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item up for discussion is update on committee of, committee on contributions that I understand met February, February of this, this year.
At the end of February, we got the board together in its initial meeting, went over their role, answered all their questions, I think they're, they seemed pretty eager to, to go, we, we've talked with them about how the city can help them put together a process, including the software for, for accepting grants, and offered up Ms. Jackson, as we do far too often, services to, to help the committee on contributions. services to, to help the committee on contributions because she does the strategic partnerships that the city has now and putting together our process. Rick had mentioned that the council had funded nonprofits for a lot of years. And about four years ago, we decided to really tighten that down and make it more of a grant making process. So they have to apply and show that the, be accountable for the funds that they got and things like that. So we've, we put that into place and we want to transfer that then, of course, because we're transferring a lot of those charitable organizations to the committee. Put those in place for them. So that's, seems to be going well. I think everybody's, is pretty eager. I think we have a pretty good board. Angela, do you have anything else to add and what, what occurred? And she loves when I call on her out of the blue.
Good.
Yeah. So I think, I think it'll be a good committee. I think they'll make some pretty good recommendations back to the board.
How many folks did we land on? Seems like there was some discussion about that at city council.
Yeah, there was. There was back and forth on that. I think we landed on seven. Yeah, there was seven to five. Five or seven, I think was, was it five or seven or nine or seven?
Seven is how many we actually have.
Seven's how many we have. And I can't remember what they wanted to do, if they were trying to add more or less, but ended up with seven as a majority of council. That's all I remember. Doesn't matter.
Well, you know, the thing about the grant software, Angela and I talked with Karen, was it yesterday? There's a training. I mean, there's just, it takes, the one company we used took 10 weeks of training. And you have homework in between each session of training. So it's quite involved setting it up. So you don't want to wait until the last minute.
Right.
To do that.
We anticipate probably, we're going to fund the strategic partners out of next year's budget, because there just won't be time to make those recommendations. So we're preparing our budget for this year funding. And so it'll be the next year in '24, when the first funding will go out to, to those charitable organizations.
Who's the chairman of that committee?
Who got elected chairman?
Carl Montgomery.
Yes.
Who?
Mr. Montgomery.
Carl Montgomery?
Oh, yeah, Mr., yeah, Carl Montgomery. Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Any other thoughts, comments, or questions regarding the committee on contributions? There are none. We'll proceed forward with future meetings.
Agenda committee.
We have to set a meeting date. Is that the action we need to take, just setting the date?
Yeah, we'll just set a meeting date. Everybody wants to pull off their calendars and see what might work the best. At least right now, I know things come up. Something came up for Steve and he wasn't able to make it, but that happens. We know everybody's busy. So we'll set a meeting date. And then if anything else, any other topics that the board has in mind, we're happy to put that on the agenda for next, next meeting.
Craig, how frequently do you think we need to meet?
Well, to get things set up, probably a lot more than once things get set up and get rolling. I think that, that will give us a lot more leeway in setting the meetings. I think right now, we'll probably want to get the RFP consultant on board as quickly as possible. So it might be good to set a meeting sometime late April. And if we can't get enough to respond within that period of time because they are busy, then maybe I'll make calls and we'll, we might move that out a few weeks and adjust as we need to. But if we can target a late April meeting, it might be a good idea to get, to get at least that process going.
That's late April sound to everybody. I'll be traveling the week before, I'll be in California, so.
In late April.
Well, the last week of May.
Last week of April, okay. Well.
Well, the, I'm sorry, the week of, I think the 20th, I'll be in California. The last week I'm here.
So April 17th and 24th are Mondays.
April 17th, I'll be gone. So the 24th, I'll be in town.
Yeah, the week of the 24th.
I'm actually gone, the 24th, 5th, and 6th for a conference.
Back on the 27th.
I think. Yeah, it's got to be it.
This conference involves shotguns and dead ducks.
I typically call it.
Yeah. All right. And we could, and then May 1st is that, is that next week? So if that's more convenient, that's, that's fine too, I'm sure. Let's see, this was a Wednesday meeting. So Tuesday, Wednesday, is that kind of the best? I know Monday, Kevin's got a, a standing meeting. So Tuesday, Wednesday works pretty good. Thursday evenings are council, so that's, it doesn't work too good. Nobody wants to do it on Friday.
Nope.
Yeah, I could do the 3rd.
On the 3rd? On Wednesdays are great. I think the 3rd would be great.
All right.
The 3rd, May 3rd.
So that's tentative to date, May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Give us an extra week too, to get those folks in.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
How about topics? Any topics that people want to? Other than the, obviously the RFP consultant.
Insurance, we'll have the RFP consultant.
So we'll have signature cards and things like that for whoever's going to sign. You know, we just got to follow up with everything that we've.
Yeah. Bank accounts. We'll talk, talk about process that we went through on that. Give an update on transfer, where the funds are at, what they've done.
Do we want to schedule the interviews for that day?
You think we'd be able to pull it off? Okay. All right. That'll take a pretty, pretty good chunk of the meeting.
Be awesome.
All I can do is say it didn't work, but let's try it for that.
Yeah.
Is it 4 o'clock?
Well, I was going to say, we might need to start a little earlier, just given their schedules.
Maybe make that one 3:00 or something, or even 2:00?
Yeah. We'll talk to the consultants and depending on where they are, so if they're, maybe we can catch the East Coast first and then if somebody's.
I would need to be after 3:00, Rick.
Okay.
Yeah. Somebody's on the West Coast, so we can catch them later.
May 3rd at 3:00, that's easy to remember.
Okay.
Okay.
Good idea. Okay.
I can't think of any additional topics right now, but if I do, I'll certainly shoot